The Department of Justice report came out and we've heard for several months now, well for the last year that Chief Zimmerman has been in office, that she is implementing a whole series of reforms. And I believe that these are some of the reforms that would be an early anticipation of the results of this audit. Body worn cameras were trying to rebuild trust in the community and to be able to verify what's happening out there between the community and police officers. So, a very important program and this is a very important and timely report as it is part of your overall strategy, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Body worn cameras were mentioned by Director Davis and myself. And as you'll hear, our presentation is that with our 600 cameras that are currently deployed, we are the largest police department in the nation with that many body cameras. And I appreciate the opportunity, Chair Emerald, City Council, to update you on our body worn camera program. I've said many times that I am a huge proponent of our officers wearing body worn cameras. I believe whenever you are being videotaped, your actions are likely going to improve. Now, just to refresh everybody's memory how we got to this point, for the early analysis of what I'm going to be presenting here in just a few minutes, we feel tested body worn cameras from January 2014 to March of 2014. The cameras purchased were the Taser Exxon Chest Mounted Camera and also the Flex or Glasses Mounted Camera. Now, 300 cameras were purchased at the end of fiscal year 2014, with an additional 300 cameras that were purchased during fiscal year 2015. During the development of our comprehensive body worn camera policy, we sought out our community stakeholders and we welcomed their input regarding our policy. We have carefully drafted our policy to balance a citizen's right to a fair trial, the preservation of evidence, the protection of privacy rights, and police officer accountability. Now, we anticipate that we are going to be making adjustments to our policy in the next few months and we welcome and continue to welcome input and feedback from our stakeholders. Now, the first three divisions chosen for the implementation at the end of June of 2014 of our body worn cameras were Central Division, Southeastern Division, and Mid-City Division. We chose these specific three divisions to have deployment first because they are some of the most diverse divisions in our city. We initially started with 25 cameras at each of these three divisions. Now, we purposely did that and we started with 25 cameras and only 25 cameras at each of the divisions and this was to allow time for the infrastructure to be upgraded to handle the increased bandwidth of the video. In August of 2014, each of the three divisions had an additional 25 cameras that officers were wearing. Again, we evaluated the infrastructure to make sure that everything was working as it was anticipated that it would. At the end of September of 2014, the Romanian officers at those three divisions deployed body worn cameras and by the end of October, 300 cameras were deployed. Also in October of 2014, we started our deployment of cameras at three more divisions. Now, these divisions were Southern, Northern, and Western Division. These divisions were chosen again because of their diversity and also that they are large commands. All patrol officers at these divisions are now outfitted with body worn cameras. In December of 2014, our gang suppression team officers were outfitted with body worn cameras. Now, our future implementation, which will occur in fiscal year 2016, will include the remaining patrol divisions of Northeastern, Eastern, and Northwestern Division and also our traffic and motor officers. Now, training courses were developed for the various entities using and affiliated with our body worn camera program and this also included our independent Citizens Review Board on police practices. From the very beginning of implementation to present, we asked for examples from our personnel, what if any, were the impacts that they were experiencing with their body worn cameras. Detectives indicated that they were appreciative of the additional evidence that the body worn camera provides. We have also heard this from prosecutors, both from the City Attorney's Office and the District Attorney's Office. Officers and sergeants have also said on several occasions, when a citizen indicated that they wanted to make a complaint about an officer and then when the citizen was told that the incident was captured on video, that in many cases, they no longer wanted to move forward with their complaint. Several were shown the video on the spot and they had indicated to the officer, to the sergeant, that they may have overreacted and initially wanting to make the complaint. Now, officers and sergeants have also indicated that the body worn camera has in many cases de-escalated a citizen contact or an arrest that the officer was making. And the general sentiment that I've heard from our officers is this, is that there have been zero incidents where they wished they did not have a camera and there has been numerous incidents that they were very grateful that they did have the camera. We have also heard from officers and sergeants at the divisions that does not currently have the camera, that they're eager to have the camera and they're waiting for their camera in this fiscal year. I have also personally asked, besides the officers and sergeants, commanding officers, I've asked community members, what they thought about our officers wearing body worn cameras. Almost everyone was positive with their comments regarding our body worn camera program. Now, in an attempt to measure the effectiveness of our body worn cameras, we conducted an analysis in several areas. The first analysis we conducted was to look at the number of formal complaints and the number of allegations contained in those complaints. Now, the timeframe used was to compare January to June of 2014 at the first three divisions and again, they were Mid-City, Southeastern, and Central Division, prior to the deployment of body worn cameras, compared to the following six months at those same three divisions from July to December after the body cameras were deployed. But keep in mind, as I indicated earlier in the presentation, that not all 300 cameras were deployed for the entire six months of post-deployment because we had done that in phases. So, here's what the analysis showed. The total complaints were reduced by 40.54%. There were a total of 37 formal complaints that were made in the first six months compared to 22 the next six months. Also, the allegations contained within those complaints were reduced by 59.76%. There were 82 allegations in the first six months compared to 33 the following six months. We also conducted an analysis of when an officer used force at these three divisions. Penal Code Section 835A authorizes an officer to use reasonable force to make a lawful arrest, prevent an escape, or to overcome resistance. For our policy, force may be used to effect an investigation, detention, or an arrest, control a subject who is in lawful custody, prevent an escape, or to protect the officer, the subject, or another person from injury or death. Now, the timeframe used for this analysis was three months. It was from November of 2013, December of 2013, and January of 2014, compared to those exact same timeframes the following year. So, November of 2014, December of 2014, and January of 2014. Now, what we did is that we looked at the higher levels of force use and the number of times the force was used for this presentation. The analysis showed that personal body weapons, which would be hands, feet, or knees, showed a reduction of 46.5%, 159 instances compared to 85 instances. The analysis also showed the use of chemical agents or pepper spray was reduced 30.5% or 118 instances to 82 instances. Now, body worn camera technology is a win-win for both the officer and the community. And although our body worn camera program has only been implemented for a very short period of time, as you can see with this presentation, the results are very promising. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate that. We've got a couple of requests for comment from the public, starting with Kellen Rusinello.
She's...
Yeah, Kellen Rusinello from the ACLU. Give Kellen just a minute to get in here. Why don't we go then to Brian Marvel? Oh, Kellen's here. Okay, good deal. Catch your breath, it's okay. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. A lot of people here today. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Emerald and members of the Public Safety Level Neighborhood Committee. My name is Kellen Rusinello. I am a staff attorney with the ACLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties. As I've testified here before, the ACLU believes body worn cameras can be a win-win, but only if they are deployed within a strong policy framework that ensures cameras protect the public and don't simply become another system for routine surveillance. Critically, the public must also believe that officers are being held accountable for following those policies. The Police Executive Research Forum report released yesterday reminds us of the necessity of consistent and meaningful supervision, accountability, and discipline, and how horribly things can go wrong when those systems are not in place. That is why the ACLU strongly urges the department to randomly audit body worn camera footage to ensure compliance with departmental policy and to train, discipline, and terminate officers not in compliance as appropriate. We also urge SDPD to make the video available to recorded individuals at the request with the right privacy protections. We have shared these and other recommendations with Chief Zimmerman as well as the City Council and we look forward to meeting with the chief soon to discuss them. The ACLU aims to be a resource as the program progresses so that SDPD's policy can serve as a model that ensures accountability and privacy protections for jurisdictions across the state and the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much and we look forward to the outcome of those discussions between you and our police department. Next is Brian Marvel from the San Diego POA.
Madam Chair, Honorable Committee Members, Brian Marvel, President of the SDPOA. You know, believe it or not, we actually agree quite a bit with the ACLU on a lot of these issues. I believe our department's on the forefront nationwide when it comes to body worn cameras and that's what we're touting in Sacramento and we're touting it everywhere we go. We've worked with the department and the city to create a policy that is a win-win for everybody involved, allows us the opportunity to revisit this policy. I think because of the technology that's being involved, it needs to be revisited on a regular basis because of the technology upgrades, software upgrades, and that type of stuff. Outside of the department meeting with a lot of the community groups, the POA is also meeting with the same groups. Matter of fact, we just met with the ACLU out of the statewide branch to discuss a lot of the topics that are being discussed here and finding the room where we agree on, letting the legislature in Sacramento know exactly what law enforcement and the ACLU and the community groups can agree on because they're going to craft a policy that's going to be a best practice. And we want a best practice that's good for not only the department and its officers, but we want a best practice that serves the communities that they're representing. And that's why it's important for us to continue to reach out to these community members and to these community groups to find this policy. So, I think the report that we've seen here is a good indication. I'd like to see some more methodology. One of the questions that wasn't answered on here, are officer assaults down? Officers that are wearing the cameras, are they still being assaulted at the same level? If so, what's the reason for that? And if not, I think that's a good starting point too and that's one question that wasn't asked here today. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much and since none of my colleagues are on the lights yet, I'll go ahead and open up with some questions and may as well, Mr. Marvel, put the question to us about assaults on officers. Did you collect that information and if so, what did you find?
You know, I did collect that and taking a look again at that same analysis for November 2013, December 2013, January 14, compared to November 2014, December 2014, and January 2015, at the three divisions, it's actually not good news because we actually increased by one. So, assaults on officers actually increased by one from 40 to 41. We took a look and talked to officers and talked to commanding officers and supervisors regarding this because we anticipated that it was going to go down and we were surprised that with everything else going down, that the assaults on our officers went up. What we're hearing from our officers is that, a few things, is that the increase in the mental illness, the increase in mental health calls that we go to is playing a factor in that. In addition, Prop 47, whereas we might have been able to take somebody into custody for a felony before for drug use, we had many instances where the individual said, "Just give me my ticket and you can be on your way," officer, in an aggressive manner. And then when we have to go and re-contact that individual again that might have, prior to Prop 47, had been taken to jail, it has been escalated even with the body worn camera. So, I don't know if I can just say for one reason why that is, but talking with the officers, those are a couple of the reasons that I was given.
So, so far, it hasn't served as a protection necessarily for the officers.
That's correct.
Well, and we'll see how that plays out over time too, since this is just a very limited sampling of events because we've just rolled out these cameras in the last seven or eight months or so. Adapting to technology, we've got, we'll be ordering some more through fiscal 2016. And will our contract include upgrades as technology changes? Which always does.
And yes, and what I should have said earlier, I'm sorry, that with me today is also a newly promoted lieutenant, sergeant, but newly promoted lieutenant Mike Swanson here, who has been very instrumental in the body worn camera and the contract regarding this and let him answer that question.
Yes, the technology as it increases, what built in within the contract is every two and a half years, we get a full switch out of the old technology to the new.
Okay, very good and congratulations on your promotion. The state I know is looking at this issue of body worn cameras to create statewide policy. Mr. Marvel says that the POA has been talking with folks. How about you? Have you been invited to be part of that process or have you ingratiated yourself with the process?
I have not been invited to participate in the state, but I am a member of the major city chiefs, I am a member of the California Police Chiefs, and I have given quite a bit of input to the working group regarding body worn cameras. And I've personally met with many of our stakeholders in the community here.
And of course, you're sharing your data too, because this is an important case study, I would imagine.
Yes, and we're certainly going to continue with the analysis of this. This is certainly very promising, except again, for the assaults on our officers. But as far as those other categories, it's very promising as you see.
All right. You've given us numbers, the average numbers, but do you have a breakout of each division, what's happened in each division with regard to these various categories of chemical agents, weapons, complaints, allegations?
We combined for this analysis, I'm not sure if I had that with me, but I combined those three divisions because those were the first three divisions that, you know, that had the body worn cameras, so we combined those.
Do you have data that's separate for each of the divisions?
It is definitely not.
If you could supply that to members of the committee, you know, offline, it'd be nice to see and maybe we could share that with the public too if that's... And then, what you were saying that some policy changes may happen, what do you anticipate in the way of changes?
Well, again, we want to make sure that we have a very comprehensive policy. We have learned things with the body worn cameras. So, you know, we're looking at many different things, but as an example, one of them is to, most officers are saying that they have the body worn camera. So, we're looking at letting the public know upfront that we have the body worn camera and if there's an issue where maybe that might inhibit something, that there is some discretion, but right now, it's pretty much the opposite way. So, since most officers now are already telling the public that they have the body worn camera and it's de-escalating, we're looking at changing that. So, that's as an example.
Even though the camera is there, it's obvious, you give up your expectation of privacy when you're standing in front of somebody and there's a camera, but just pointing to it, I guess, is that what you're talking about? Just letting them know that this isn't decoration or part of the uniform, it's a camera?
Yeah, to make it more obvious.
And then, and we look forward to this evolving policy and it will evolve as you learn more about it and you see the results of it. I know that they'll come in. And I look forward to the outcome of the talks with other organizations to help fine-tune it. One question, and I know probably media are here because of the recent shooting of a pit bull in Pacific Beach by an officer, and the question arose if the officer was wearing a camera and if so, was that camera rolling to capture that shooting incident?
You know, that incident's being thoroughly investigated. I don't have all those answers right now.
All right. But under the policy, the current policy, would a camera be rolling under those circumstances or is it only when you're stopping a person?
The policy would be on an enforcement contact, so it would depend on, you know, how quickly the event evolved, was the officer in an actual enforcement contact. We're thoroughly investigating that incident.
Okay, we look forward to the outcome of that investigation. Thank you. I've got tons of other questions, but now we have members of the committee on the lights and we'll start with Mr. Gloria.
Thank you, Ms. Emerald and Chief. Thanks so much for the presentation. It's obviously, we've made a significant investment in these cameras and it's good to see some of these numbers, which I think are incredibly encouraging as you noted, with regard to the drops in usage of weapons and chemical agents. It seemed to me like those were, I understand why you have the reduction in complaints and allegations. That seems a human nature and I'm glad to see that that's what's happening and hopefully that's some extra time your officers can do with something else that's important. But what was striking to me, and I don't understand why, the reduction in the body weapon and chemical agents, can you kind of explain, do you think that's really just the cameras?
I do. I think...
Explain that more.
Yeah, I believe, you know, talking with the officers, again, the commanding officers, the supervisors of the officers, so many times, it's been getting de-escalated. And so, when it starts to escalate, then maybe you would have to go into some other type of force. The officer again reminds the individual, "You are, I have a body worn camera, you're being videotaped right now," and in many cases, it de-escalates and the person submits to arrest.
It's fascinating to me. It's something Potters Cole understands better than I, having been in those shoes, but it's just interesting, that's of interest to me. But again, I think it's positive and worth the investment for the reductions in the complaints and allegations since I know those are timely, costly, and obviously are happening in a broader context for the department. It's nice to see, I think it's a tribute to the professionalism of your officers that with this additional resource, that the numbers are falling. There's been some discussion about the policy around this, it's a bit in flux and you've kind of lessons learned and that's going to come back. Give a timeframe for that.
We hope within the next couple of months to solidify that. I look forward to more discussion with the ACLU, with the Police Officer Association, with other stakeholders, with our officers. A lot of the suggestions come from our officers too. Like I said, most of the time, the officers tell the individual that we had the body, they're wearing a body worn camera, so.
And in this, making me, I don't know the answer to this, but in terms of the changes at the statewide level that are being contemplated, are those legislative actions or is that some other entity that's going to provide this policy direction on body worn cameras?
I think both. I know there's an Assembly Bill, I think it's 60, that's looking at best practices regarding that. And you know, it's very true is that you have to have a strong policy to go with any body worn camera program and I'm pleased to say that our policy has gone throughout the United States and other countries.
But I guess it's for that reason, particularly if there's a legislative act that's going to be necessary, you know, not something that's kind of within the realm of law enforcement, the big chiefs and whatnot that are discussing this, but if our legislators are going to be involved, you know, it'd be my hope and perhaps direction to the mayor's office to make sure our lobbyists are actively engaged in that, taking our experience as your officer's experience because we are pioneers and we're the largest department that are deploying these, that our experiences are informing the legislation, not perhaps just the small departments or whatever they're speculating. I think we all know, at least the four of us know, good legislation comes from, usually from personal experience and you have that. So, while I know you're actively engaged, I know we also pay people pretty decent money to be up there on our behalf and I'm hopeful that they would be carrying that message. So, I guess for the mayor's office, that might be something to provide some direction on. With regard to training of officers, how is that going? Do you feel that's relatively sufficient? Do you need more resources to do that?
As far as body worn camera, what we're doing right now, we're actually starting it at the academy. So, what we're doing is that we are having the recruits at the academy to put it on so as they go through the academy scenarios, first of all, getting used to wearing it. And so, it's starting at the academy. It is, once we get the budget for the fiscal year 2016, the next phase also between those divisions would also be our trainees that are out in the field because this is a whole another area that we're going to be able to train even better our younger officers because we can, you know, the field trained officer can show them, it's great to verbally tell them something, but then they can show them right then and there the video, "Hey, you did this right, this was very good," or "You need to improve in this area and take a look." So, not just from the analysis that we did here, but there's a huge training component. So, thanks for that question.
So, for the additional deployment of the cameras, you have the funding to do that?
This was, well, this is what I'm asking for in the fiscal year 2016.
So, it was a part of, because I know that there were deployment issues, but just practical, you know, concerns about getting all these cameras out on the street. You talked a little bit about that.
Just...
And so, it does require a second year appropriation to get to the full deployment of cameras that you're...
Yes, it does.
Okay, so just, obviously the budget share, I'm interested in that and it's helpful for us to know. One thing that, and I'm sorry, congratulations on your promotion, I didn't catch your name though. You mentioned in your comments to the chairwoman that these will be refreshed every two and a half years, is that right?
Correct.
And so, this is an ongoing cost, this is not, I think in my mind, I had this as a one-time cost for the purchase of the cameras along with, I knew there was ongoing costs with regard to the subscription, the sort of the brains of the operation, that would make sense, but so in terms of the actual expenditure on a go-forward basis, are we basically looking at the couple million that we've spent so far on an annual basis?
It won't be on an annual basis. Again, this is, we have a five-year contract. This is for the second part of that, of the contract.
But for the next fiscal year, but if they're going to be refreshed every couple of years...
That's included in the contract. It's a five-year contract. So, it's the replacement is included in the contract and not an additional cost, is my understanding.
Okay, so through the course of this contract, we're going to get basically two sets of cameras if they're refreshed on the two and a half year over the five-year thing and then after that length of time, well, I guess it would remain to be seen whether or not we need to purchase new cameras, probably at that point, I guess five-year old cameras are probably something you need to do.
I would imagine technology's going to change and then of course, you know, I imagine by that point, many other departments might be, you know, we'll take a look to see what other storage costs are out there. So, there'll be other things that we're going to take a look at, but this is a five-year commitment.
Okay. Well, is this helpful for us to, I think, forecast what the expectations are in terms of cost, what we need to look for, if it's not in there, why is it not in there, the kinds of things that we're meant to do? Any other concerns that you'd like to mention with regard, I appreciate the comment about or the question that Mr. Marvel asked, that Ms. Emerald ended up asking, and just to make sure I got the absolute numbers correct, it's an increase of one, it's from 40 to 41?
That is correct.
In my judgment, that's 41, too many. I'm interested in knowing if there's any way that you can see a reduction, because obviously we've seen reductions in those other measurements. I mean, obviously one is not a substantial increase, but it's again, one more, 41 more than we want. I don't, do you think there's any way that the cameras can be deployed to address that further?
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at everything. Again, these are early analysis and I would tell you, I was surprised, you know, with everything else that was reduced, I was almost sure when we looked at the numbers that this also would have been reduced and I was surprised that it didn't.
But I guess that's why I was asking the questions about the personal body weapon and the chemical agents. You know, obviously if officers are continuing to be attacked, I mean, these suspects, the camera is not a deterrent. So, again, with the actual physical involvement, I get your point. I would just ask you to keep us posted and look forward to additional discussion of how these should be properly deployed. I appreciate the comments from the ACLU representative. Personal privacy, I think, is something that's personally important to me, I think to my constituents as well. There's a fine line that goes there, but on the whole, I'm a strong supporter of this program. I think it's obviously yielding results already and my interest would be making sure that we get the maximum benefit of these cameras, both for the public and for our officers.
Great, thank you. Thank you for those questions too. Mr. Kate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Just a couple brief questions. In terms of the infrastructure side of it, the data storage, you alluded to it a little bit ago in your comments, are we all set for this next round deployments and then the future, the future replacement of it from an infrastructure side, from a data storage side, or are there going to be additional upgrades beyond what's listed in the contract but from us, from a CIP side or anything else?
That was all part of it and it's included in that entire contract.
Okay, perfect, okay. And then, in terms of the data side and getting to some more of the analysis, are you looking at those on a monthly basis and reporting out on those based on the division and the deployments of those? I mean, it'd be great to see kind of the trends moving forward and figuring out, you know, was it all kind of a one-time sticker shock kind of effect with the cameras or something? Were we noticeably seeing trends of reductions in various data points?
In the next analysis is going to be when those next three divisions reach their six-month deployment and then have the additional analysis of their first... their six-month deployment, and then have the additional analysis of the first three divisions that I just gave. So yes, we're taking a look at it, and then we plan to do regular updates, certainly at least every, you know, six months.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And the last point, and about the policy and some of the statewide legislation, granted, yes, some good legislation does come from personal experience, also bad legislation comes from Sacramento, and, and I know, I would imagine, Mr. Marvel and his trips up to Sacramento, as well as your contacts, talking about various policies or whatnot, just ask, I know you're already thinking about it, but making sure that whatever comes out of Sacramento, if anything, does not also hinder us and with the policies that we're, that we're pushing forward.
That's a concern, yes.
And so I don't have any other, as a matter of fact, thoughts as well, too, so it sounds like we're doing a lot of great work from the front end, and meeting with community groups and whatnot, I don't want all that work to go for naught from whatever comes out of Sacramento.
I agree with you, and that, that's a concern, and that's why I think it's important that, that individual departments should be able to develop their own policy, because community stakeholders may be different, different entities, large departments, small departments. I don't think any of the policy will come with any money, so you're correct, is that there's a lot of issues that go into this.
Absolutely, well, thank you so much for all of your work, and all of the other groups, including ACLU for your, for their group, their input as well, too, and I look forward to seeing more about this. Thank you very much.
And again, hasing back to the comments by Mr. Gloria, asking the mayor's office to make sure this becomes part of our legislative agenda, and that we pay close attention to what's happening in Sacramento with regard to the policies, and, and offer our input and our experience, so thank you. Ms. Cole?
Thank you, Chair, Emerald. Just to let you know that the state legislation that's being introduced is by our very own Dr. Shirley Weber, and she has a concern about this, so we're keeping an eye on that AP 66 that's coming across, because she does want uniformity across the state in the way the body cameras are being used. And again, it is Dr. Weber, and we're going to make sure that we keep an eye on that bill with her, because she has a stake in this district and in the city of San Diego, and that will be helpful in our discussions at committee later on. And just, could you describe that one assault that occurred, so that we can be clear of what that, what that increase was? If you would, that one assault, the 41? It was 41?
We went from 40 assaults to 41.
Right, in that one assault?
There was one, there was one assault, that, well, there was obviously 41 assaults. There was one that came, well, there were several of them that came to my attention, but what I think what you're talking about in particular, is that we had one of our officers that was contacting an individual who was homeless, had a call, and had walked up to that individual who had a blanket, and as soon as the officer contacted the individual, popped the officer, hit the officer in the face a couple times, and started to choke the officer, and the officer was able to get the suspect into custody. And that was, the officer had just walked up to the individual, and out of nowhere, the, at that point, the suspect had struck the officer two times, and at least two times, I believe, in the face, and started to choke the officer.
And thank you for that, but not to make light of that, just one assault, but if a television camera were to be there, I think the person would have possibly done the same thing, depending, because of the circumstances of that individual, I believe. So I just want to say that I'm hoping that it will go down from here on, on out, and that we will have less and less assaults of our police officers, because again, the cameras are also to make sure that our officers are safe as well as the public, so I'm hoping that those assaults will go down here on out. Thank you, Chief, for this report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, you bet. And a question for you, Chief, you're talking about the, talking with the ACLU, and Mr. Gloria was looking for an update, would you? And the ACLU, I see Mr., I see Kellen is back here. Could we get a report back, an update on your talks, and whether you've had some agreement at our May 13th meeting? We're doing a joint meeting with the Gang Commission, May 13th at 6:00 PM at the Jacobs Center, and...
I don't know if the policy will be completed by then, may I make a suggestion? Is that the next time I come back with the next analysis, I would believe that the policy would be done at that time, where we have the next three divisions, to make it more of a comprehensive? I don't know if the policy will be done by then.
Well, if, if there's any movement on the policy, it would be nice to have an update.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to add? Oh, excuse me. Anything else you'd like to add before I turn over to the innovative budget analyst, who's got a comment?
Thank you, Chair, Emerald. I just want to provide a little bit more clarification on the budgetary questions that were asked. The contract was approved by the council, it was a five-year contract, contingent on council approval of the budget each year for those amounts that were included in the contract going forward, and also the infrastructure issues related to the upgrades to the department's communications bandwidth, where, was a separate budgetary item apart from the TASER contract, that was approved, that was identified as one of the additional needs by our office during the May revise process, and that was included in the fiscal '15 budget, as a separate item.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else anybody would like to add? Any other questions, concerns? Thank you very much, and I know you're staying right where you are. To give us the latest on recruiting and retention, of course, we, we had lots of movement on this here recently with the new contract with our police officers. This, again, was another big issue in the audit about recruiting and retaining officers, and this is something that we've been working on for quite some time.